States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business is the call of the roll.
Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor Johnson is here. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Here.
Pat Breslin is here. Supervisor Hedlund.
Here.
Hedlund is here. Supervisor Score.
Here.
Score is here. Supervisor Zanz.
Present.
Supervisor Zanz is present. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Here.
Gary Bjork is present. Supervisor Willsey.
Here.
Supervisor Willsey is present. Supervisor Quinn.
Here.
Supervisor Quinn is here. Supervisor Jerseemo. Who's going to be joining us online is, is she there? All right, we'll circle back. Supervisor Whitzel.
Here.
Supervisor Whitzel is here. Supervisor Kneer.
Here.
Supervisor Kneer is here. Supervisor Barrier.
Here, here.
Supervisor Barrier is with us online. Supervisor Calabrese.
Here.
Supervisor Calabrese is here. Supervisor Lyon.
Here.
Supervisor Lyon is here. Supervisor Vogel.
Here.
Supervisor Vogel is here. Supervisor McCullough.
Here, here.
Supervisor McCullough is online. Supervisor Sean Breslin is excused. Supervisor Vandermeulen.
Yeah.
Joining us online. Supervisor Vandermeulen is online. Supervisor Robinson.
Here.
Supervisor Robinson is online. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse is here. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Thomas.
Here.
Supervisor Thomas is here. Supervisor Randy Prochnow is excused. Someone got married. My condolences. Just kidding. Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert is here. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork is here. Supervisor Bauer.
Here.
Supervisor Bauer is here. Supervisor Lino.
Here.
Supervisor Lino is here. Supervisor Hartson.
Here.
Supervisor Hartson is here. Chair Steen.
Here.
Chair Steen is present. Okay.
Next order of business is the approval of amendments November 12th, 2023. What's the board's pleasure? Supervisor Morehouse moves. Is there a second? Supervisor Lino seconds it. Any discussion, corrections? Hearing on all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed sign. Motion carried. Next order of business is the presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. And 5A is a memorial for Supervisor Don Keither. And I would like to address that just shortly. I didn't know Don before I came on the board. I found Don to be a very thoughtful and thoughtful and accommodating and my definition of a good public servant. As those of you that were able to attend the funeral or read his obituary, he was a good, a good public servant, a good man to work with. I got a lot of respect for him over the years. And I just think we should take a moment of silence to thank him for his, his service to the Dunn County Board, if you would please. The brief time I've been on the board, well, I guess it's not so brief, but we've had too many of these people leaving us this way in the last year or two, and it's, it's unfortunate. The next order of business is 5B retirements. I'll do the best I can with the names here, but Heidi Sabalko, 29 years with the neighbors. Ron Willsey, 13 years with the highway department. Eugene Litzkow, 26 years with the Dunn County Jail.
Yes, thank you. Well, I know, I know a lot of times retirement's gone talked about at board meetings, but this one's kind of special to me. My dad, Ron Willsey, has retired from the county after 13 years. And the nephews and nephews made a nice little sign for him that said, no work ahead. You can see up there, so I thought that was pretty neat. In 1979, my, my grandfather had a heart attack, and my dad stepped up at the age of 17, started Malcolm Cowles full-time. He would do chores in the morning, then go to school, then back home for night chores. He continued working on the farm, and then in 1990, he officially bought the family farm for my grandparents. Farming is a rewarding, but also a grinding hard way to make a living. So in 2009, the tough decision was made to sell the farm. There's a lot of uncertainty on what my father would do, but fortunately Dunn County Highway Department offered him a job. My father took very, very much pride in his work, and I bet Dustin Bender would agree. Nobody kept a cleaner truck. My father and family always be grateful for the opportunity to work for the county, and I'm so proud of my dad, and I congratulate him on his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I, I just might add that monthly and in the last couple of years, or maybe three years, we've had a lot of retirement of longtime employees here at Dunn County. And I, I think I can speak for the board that we're very appreciative of all the good employees we've had here. And it goes without saying that without them, our county doesn't deliver the services that we want to deliver. So I just wanted to say that. Next order of business is public comment. Do we have anybody that wants to make a public comment? Or is willing to, put it that way? Yes. Mr. Bender.
I just want to thank all of you, as well as the community, for all the support with my family, family situation that's going on right now. So I just want to thank all of you for all the, the thoughts, prayers, and all the support. So thank you.
And I think you can rest assured that the board's best wishes are from everyone is for you and your family. Next order of business, you should have a sheet of paper on your table there, the appointments. The first two, we need board approval, so I would entertain a motion to, to that effect. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Hedlund seconds. Any discussions or if not, not hearing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Oh, all right. I apologize for online voters. I got to slow down. So, and, and the big list, as you go through it, are the chairs. Next order of business is the report of the county manager. Ms. Corpola.
This evening, you'll see that you're going to, during my time, you'll get a short presentation from Superintendent Joe Zadalski from the Menominee School District. Joe approached me about, asked, I'm coming to speak with you about the February referendum. I was, did receive a question after the fact about what about some of the other districts that have referendums coming up as well? And, you know, there's, Joe asked, so I said yes, but if there are other people that wish to, and there's time to speak in, in, in a future meeting, it isn't, it isn't a exclusive offer. I believe the reason that, my reasoning for wanting an opportunity for Joe to speak to you is because we share a tax bill. And so whatever happens with the school district will also impact our constituents and the taxes that they pay in the Menominee School District. So, Joe, without further ado.
Thank you very much, Chris, and thank you Supervisors for giving me a few minutes of your time. I'm going to go very quick. I want to respect your time. Like the school board, I'm sure you have plenty of business, but I, I wanted to make sure that people in the county are aware that the school district of Menominee area is holding a referendum on February 20th. It's going to be an operational referendum. And here's the question that'll be on the ballot. The school district is requesting additional revenue limit authority of $4.2 million on a recurring basis. Really, this has to do with the high rate of inflation and pandemic funding that will be expired at the end of the school year. Just a little bit about us, you probably are very familiar. I'm a proud Dunn County resident now for 10 years. I know a lot of you have been here a lot longer than that. But we have about 3,300 students in our school district, and you can see from the slide, 43% of our students are considered economically disadvantaged by the state, meaning that they're qualified for free reduced lunch. We also have a high percentage of special education services for students and also students where English is not their home language. All this information's on the school district website, so if you want to refer to it, Chris has the link, and be happy to share that with anybody as well. I already kind of covered what the referendum is about, but again, it's an operational referendum. We're not asking to put up a new building. We're not asking for a big capital expenditure. What we're asking to do is to continue operations in our school. We're not looking to add a bunch of staffing. We're not looking to add a bunch of programming. This is simply to keep our operations going in the school district of Menominee area. This chart here shows the state of Wisconsin, and it's really important to understand, this is a statewide issue. This is not a local issue. This is not mismanagement by the school board or something like that. 82% of school districts now in Wisconsin have had to go to operating referendum. Menominee is one of the 18% that hasn't yet, but we're at the point now where without additional revenue, significant cuts will have to be made. This chart here shows state revenue limits by, by pupil, by student. The black line is the state average of what the revenue limit would be if it was indexed to inflation. The blue line is what the actual revenue per student is in the state. That's because so many school districts have gone to referendum. Our revenue limit in Menominee is the maroon line. You can see that the amount of revenue per student that we're getting in Menominee is significantly less than what the state average is and what the state actual revenue limit is. The green line is what Menominee's revenue limit would be if it would have been indexed to inflation, but it has not. We're falling behind. This one clarifies it a little bit more. These are all the schools in the Big Rivers Conference. You can see from top to bottom, Hudson's at the very top, and then Rice Lake. The black line again is the state average, but then you have Eau Claire, the blue line, Chippewa Falls, the red line, and then Menominee is below that. Almost every one of these school districts is going to referendum in 2024. River Falls is having a referendum, both an operational and a building referendum in February. The Leader Telegram has covered how Eau Claire and Chippewa Falls are having a referendum in April. We're having a referendum. I believe New Richmond is looking at a referendum for building as well. If the referendum does not pass, we are in a situation where we'll have to make reductions. We have not identified exactly which program or school or whatever that would be cut. It's, it's significant enough where it's going to touch all areas of the school district. Longer bus rides, less teachers, higher class sizes, potentially even closing some elementary schools. We're very proud of the program that we have here. We have seven schools, the high school, the middle school, and five elementary schools. I'm very proud of our rural elementary schools in Downsville and the NAP. They do a great job. And the way open enrollment works, if we close those schools, you know, some people think that would be a big savings. Well, if you only lose a fraction of those students, you lose that revenue for those students in that cut that you'd, all of a sudden, we're going to save all this money, you really didn't save much. So I, I really think the school board is wise in asking the community to consider a referendum in February. So the bottom line, what's it going to do to the tax rate? The tax rate has dropped dramatically for the school district of Menominee area. That's a function of a few different things. Certainly, the property valuations in our school district have increased. You know, that, that changes the rate. As values go up, the rate goes down. But there's also been millions of dollars earmarked for education in state budgets that, you know, the lawmakers say it's for education, but if there's not a corresponding increase to the revenue limit, really, the schools act as a conduit for a property tax relief, which is good from a property tax standpoint. I don't like paying property taxes any more than anybody else, but the fact of the matter is, just because the dollars from the state say it's for education, if they don't raise the revenue limits, it doesn't go to education. It goes to property tax relief. So when we look at this, we're looking at 82 cents on the mill rate, starting in 2024. So that'd be $82 for every $100,000 of property valuation. You know, most places in Menominee, Dunn County are over $200,000, so probably looking somewhere between $14 and $20 a month for most people. I do want to make sure I talk about this. This referendum is not a three-year referendum, or a five-year referendum, or a seven-year referendum. This is a recurring referendum. So that means that there'll be a one-time increase, but that increase will continue into the future. We are doing a recurring referendum because we're a people business in our school. We're not all of a sudden not going to have third grade, or, you know, get rid of science and math. These expenses are going to continue into the future. So if we do a short-term referendum, that's really like a Band-Aid on a, a long-term problem, and that'll just create a fiscal cliff three, five, or seven years from now. So that's what the gray bars show. You can see the one-time increase, and as it continues into the future. So we're just about done. I think you all know how to vote, so I'll skip this slide, but if you do have any questions, please check it out. And then this is my favorite side of the whole presentation, the last slide. We have so many great things going on in our school district. Our staff is terrific. Our families are terrific. Our kids are getting a wonderful educational experience. Certainly, the classroom comes first, but we are giving kids the opportunity to become the adults that they're going to be in our society, and it's a really bright future, not only for the school district of the Menominee area, but for Dunn County and the state of Wisconsin. Any questions by the Supervisors tonight?
Supervisor Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It doesn't make any difference, but I'd just like you to know that I had the pleasure of being a, a school board member years ago, and we were talking about saving rural schools at that time, and I was really delighted to hear you talk about the importance of NAP and Downsville. But my question has to do mostly with the cost of having an election and why this is not with a spring election, and what cost would Dunn County be having with just have the school, school referendum district? And then the last one is, as being a property owner, you know, it's sort of like, why, why does the property owner bear this responsibility and the person that uses the schools with children and is not a property owner? I mean, have they ever tried to fund, what you're asking, with like an additional sales tax?
Thanks for the questions. I want, I want to make sure I hit both of them, so hold me to it if I, if I skip the second one. The first question, though, had to do with, why is it on February 20th? And that's a really good question, and we've had that question a lot. We've had a school board primary election pretty much every year since I've been here. It just so happens, we aren't going to have a primary election this year. So it, it does raise questions, but regardless of the school board primary, it is so important that we know soon what our revenue is going to be for next year. Kids are already signing up for next year's classes, and especially with teacher shortages and employee shortages, we start hiring, we already are posting positions for next year. So if we were to wait till April, let's say, the employee pool, the pool of candidates is going to start dwindling down so much that we really have to begin our planning now, and knowing February 20th is going to be critical, that we can have a good school year next year. To your other question about how schools are funded, I agree. I, I really think it's a problem in Wisconsin, especially when the state is sitting on a multi-billion dollar surplus. You know, I've talked to state, state representatives, our local state representatives as well. I don't understand why they're not funding schools more so that it doesn't go back to the local property tax. Or if they want to just keep the school revenue limits the way they have been, then provide some property tax relief with that surplus. You know, one way or another, I really think the state has the means to do a better job, and I hope that they do that soon. I'm optimistic. I do think we're going to see something from the state here at some point, and I hope that'll impact the tax rate for 2024.
Any other questions of Joe? If not, thank you for the presentation.
I really appreciate and respectful of your time. Thank you very much, and please reach out to me if you have any other questions after the meeting. Thank you.
And then one more thing, it's really just an information item. We did talk about this at the executive committee. So the National Association, this was in your packet, the National Association of Counties made a request through the Wisconsin Counties Association for each of the counties to contribute $1,000 of an allotment called LATCF, which we received, which was federal local tech, local assistance and tribal consistency fund money, which came through in two payments, one in 2022 and one in 2023 of $50,000 each. So we had $100,000 over a two-year period of LATCF money. The National Counties Association, Association of Counties and the Wisconsin Counties Association are asking that we send back $1,000 of that for establishment of the National Center for Public Lands. And then you'll see in your letter, there's a whole, kind of an explanation around the kind of research that they do, looking at environmental, economic, and social impact of public lands that are located within counties. So the executive committee discussed it and was endorsed that we return $1,000 of our $100,000 allotment for this purpose. So it's just for your awareness, the money is already received and has not been allocated. So it is in our, it is currently in our budget and available to be spent, and so it, it'll be no additional change to the budget. It'll just be directed where those, that funding goes. Any questions about that? All right. I think that that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chris. Next order of business is number nine, reports, reports of departments. Dunn County Housing Authority, addressing that is Tammy Levera. Waiting patiently, I might add.
Like you said, I am Tammy July Levera. I work for the Dunn County Housing Authority, and so I did provide a copy of the report that I prepared for the housing authority's annual meeting in your packet. The report provides a brief explanation of the two programs operated by the Dunn County Housing Authority and also the outcomes of the year. I'll keep the amount of the report that I cover brief, for the sake that you already have that report. Before I talk about that, though, just to, to talk a little bit about the background and a better understanding of how housing authorities are created, for any new people, because I talk about this every year, but for the new folks. So the state law establishes for a housing authority to exist in every municipality within the state. Then when a municipality finds there is a need for a housing authority, they declare that need by resolution. Once the resolution is adopted, the housing authority becomes a separate legal entity. So that's how the Dunn County Housing Authority came to be. Then the next step is the governing body of the municipality. In this case, it would be the Dunn County Board of Supervisors appoints a five-member board of commissioners to operate the housing authority. So that's how it all works and, and who we are. A little bit about what we do. Dunn County Housing Authority provides rent subsidy assistance to low-income residents of Dunn County. We cover all of Dunn County excluding the city of Menominee. When the Dunn County Housing Authority was created, the Menominee Housing Authority had already existed for about 30 years at that time, so the Dunn County Housing Authority was created to serve the rest of the county. So that's why we do not serve the city of Menominee. Making sure I covered that. So we serve and, we served an average of 64 households per month in 2023. We are continuously conducting lease-up activities through what's called tenant briefings. In 2023, we conducted a total of 14 separate tenant briefings. Each tenant briefing is a group meeting and typically has between two and eight applicants that attend the meeting. Our goal is to serve as many households as possible within the budget that we receive. Because of the housing shortage in Dunn County, it is difficult for our voucher holders to locate available housing and to use assistance offered to them. That's why we have to have so many tenant briefings, just to try to fill our vouchers. We're kind of going through our waitlist on a continuous basis. It often takes going through the process multiple times before a household is successful with receiving assistance under our program. That being said, we always appreciate any assistance with outreach that we can get. So if you know of anyone or hear of anyone that is in need, definitely, please refer them to me. And also, if you know of any landlords that I may not have heard of, please share, or have them call the housing authority to get more information and, and kind of, you know, make that connection. That would be great. My number is listed on the report in your packet, and it's also on our website, and that is duncanyhousing.org. Also attached to the report that I provided for tonight is a point-in-time snapshot of the voucher programs, household, and assistance demographics for the month of December. As of December 2023, the Dunn County Housing Authority served a total of 578 households under the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We are looking at about 65 households under contract for February 1st. We're averaging between four and eight months for our waitlist, and that is time from the application being dropped off at the office and that household actually starting to begin assistance. That's where we track that four- to eight-month period. Housing Authority also operates a secondary program available to only voucher holders, and that's also covered in the report that you received. That is called the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. Also, that, that program is, like I said, a secondary program, and it is a case management component of the voucher program. Family Self-Sufficiency Program operates under a joint agreement with St. Croix County Section 8, which are WIDA vouchers or the state vouchers. Our contract is to serve a total of 15 participants per year between the two counties. So it's a pretty small program, but a great program. Through that program, our voucher holders get help with referrals to other agencies, goal-setting, financial counseling, resume writing, many other assistance. All of, all of what we do with that program is geared towards helping those voucher holders gain self-sufficiency. The ultimate goal of the Family Self-Sufficiency Program is to increase turnover on the voucher program, helping to move voucher holders off the program quicker when possible. Throughout the years, many of our Family Self-Sufficiency graduates have gone on to be homeowners at the time of completing the program. So it's a very nice extra piece to have in Dunn County with our vouchers. Not all housing authorities have this secondary program. In fact, the funding notice just came out last week, and Dunn County Housing Authority is one of 13 housing authorities in the state to have the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. So it's, it's becoming quite rare. In closing, I just want to mention a few other benefits of the Dunn County Housing Authority. And the program, of course, helps reduce the homeless population in Dunn County, helps improve the education of the children in Dunn County, receiving that, that family stability is a huge piece of a better education. It helps improve the local housing stock through the required inspections that we do, and it brings in over $400,000 of federal funding into Dunn County. Most of the administrative expenses of the program are paid by HUD. HUD does not provide 100% of the funding that it requires to administer the program, unfortunately. And they do, as part of the, all of the regulations behind the program, they do require housing authorities to seek support from the communities that they serve, along with any other possible funding sources. And that's why I'm here. That's why the Dunn County Housing Authority comes to, to, to the county of Dunn every year requesting some support, and Dunn County has been incredible with providing that support. So thank you for that. Thank you for always supporting us and being a big part of the housing authority's success. I myself really appreciate it, and you can definitely ask questions tonight, but even if something pops up now or anytime, I'll, I'll probably be here next January. Anytime in between, if there's any questions, feel free to reach out to me, and I can answer those for you.
Do any of the Supervisors have any questions to Tammy? Supervisor Willsey. Do you know how much
Do you know how much the county is on the hook for this program?
Um, we have not got our official award for this year. I believe last year was 46,000.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would it be more effective to have, you know, just one housing authority instead of having one for Dunn County and one for Menominee? Would there be any cost savings by combining them?
No. Um, so we run two, essentially two separate programs. There are, are three different types of subsidized housing. Um, the Dunn County Housing Authority, we operate the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which is tenant-based, which means we have no housing. We, all of our housing is provided by private landlords. So we are just providing the assistance piece. Where Menominee Housing Authority is what's called project-based housing, they own all of the housing. Um, so two different things. The federal law has it established where two housing authorities are not supposed to serve the same area and, and compete against each other, um, because then we'd be just looking at putting each other out of business and that's not good. Um, the other thing is it comes with separate rules and funding and, and all that stuff. So Menominee Housing Authority essentially would have to hire more staff. And then if they're serving Dunn County, they would probably be here asking for some money too. So it's, it's, you know, doesn't really, it, you know, doesn't pay.
Any other questions? Supervisor Illinois.
Uh, yeah, I just have one, uh, question. Uh, does the housing, um, options, what's the percentage between families, families with children and elderly?
That's on the last page of the report. Um, I'm not positive, but I believe it's somewhere around our elderly and, um, disabled population that we serve is somewhere around 45% of our voucher use.
Okay. Thank you. I, I didn't know where that percentage was. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tammy? Uh, hearing none. Uh, thank you very much for your report. Next order of business is the transit and Austin Witt will, uh, enlighten us on that.
Good evening, everyone. I feel like I was just here, but it was a year ago. So, uh, hello again to all the familiar faces and a few new ones. My name is Austin. I'm the Transit Manager at Dunn County. Today we will talk about ridership, financials, staffing, team building for the year, around the shop, on the route, electric bus update and any questions that you have. We'll start off with the doorstop ridership. This is comparing all the previous years. A bit hard to see on the screen, but 2023, uh, is the light green line right in the middle. So, uh, it's right, uh, in kind of the median of our previous years, all the way back to 2015. Uh, but as I will show in a couple of slides from now, uh, there's some good reasoning for that. Uh, doorstop and red-seater ridership, that's our specialized, uh, ADA bus, door-to-door bus as well for the general public. Uh, uh, small fare for that. And door-to-door service of about 7:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. Next up, we'll talk about the stout ridership. This UW Stout Route goes from upper to lower campus from 7:17 in the morning till 9:09 at night, Monday through Friday, around Labor Day through around Memorial Day, minus stout's few breaks in there. So looking at the top line, uh, our last academic year and last fiscal year, 2023, uh, did very well. Silver star for the second best year ever of those months, comparing the previous years of those months and then gold stars as well. Our spring totals were the best semester ever and, we still have yet to see what the spring semester brings for the academic year of this year, but great numbers all around and looking back at, this last academic year at 109,000, the second best year ever to date on that. Community route. The reason why the ridership dropped a little bit on our door-to-door bus service is, uh, we spread awareness on how the community route worked. And up until September of this year, it was free to the public since June of 21. So a lot of riders that were paying for rides door-to-door lived really close to the bus route. Uh, we let them know how to ride and a lot of those riders started riding the community bus to the grocery store and the door-to-door bus service back to their house, saving some money. Um, creating better ridership on the community route. Uh, looking at 2023, um, was the best year ever, every month through August. And we maintained ridership on that route when we went back to a $1 fare in September of this year. Pre-2020, pre-COVID, the rate was $1.50 for non-elderly, non-disabled and 75 cents for elderly or disabled. It's a dollar, uh, for riders and you can buy a punch card now for 20 rides for $15 to the general public or $10 for 20 rides elderly and disabled. Uh, community Saturday route, uh, had very poor ridership, uh, in previous years and that did extremely well this year as well. So great ridership, uh, the best years on both the community Monday through Friday route and the community Saturday route. I think if we would have had a little bit colder of a fall, a lot more students would have been riding that community bus, uh, this fall semester too, to really show some great numbers there. 2023 financials, um, I'll get into a few more details and great positives of this year uh, in the staffing, next slide. But looking at our financials here, uh, I wanted to put this in the format that most of you see, uh, for the other departments. The only thing this is not showing for the projected, it's currently showing 42,000 to the good. Uh, for the year, there's only two weeks of payroll that hasn't hit that and other couple of small bills bringing the total savings on the expense side to around 27,000 to the good. Uh, still, uh, 3% to 4% beating the budget on the expense side. And year-to-date actuals looks like it's negative 135,000, but with, uh, quarter three and quarter four still being needed to be paid from the state. Um, 56,000 is still coming for quarter three and 76,000 coming for quarter four. Brings the total money from the state to 132,000. Uh, brings it to around a net wash on the revenue side for almost perfect for our projections. So that has been good, uh, to see there. Staffing. Team members, we have one operation supervisor, two dispatchers, eight drivers and one of those drivers as well is cross-trained to dispatch as a third. 2023 special notes, when I spoke, uh, last year, that was right after the beginning of all of the transit drivers becoming county employees on January 2nd of 2023. We are a full year into that. We haven't lost a single employee in 2023 and, uh, from termination or resignation. So it's been great retention. They really appreciate it. Uh, we did well on the budget to maintain, uh, where we needed to be. Uh, so we appreciate, uh, the county board's approval uh, in bringing them on the team and making the county stronger. Team building. Uh, every quarter or so, we try to, you know, come together out of the office, uh, and become a better team. Uh, out of the office as well as in the office. So the summer, we went pontooning. Uh, we had heart saver training. Again, that's a two-year training that goes through CPR, AED and first aid. Um, we try to stay up to date on that as a team and invite any other departments to, uh, offer for their employees if they'd like to join us as well on that. Back-to-school bonfire on Labor Day weekend. Narcan training, uh, was a big one this year that has never been, um, done with us before, that the Menominee Police Department came to us and said, hey, uh, we'd like to offer this training with you and your employees, uh, that are on the routes. It's a bigger deal. The opioid epidemic in this city, a bigger deal than people think. Um, and they provided us with Narcan, um, medicine that is now on the buses. So the drivers are trained on it. It's in every bus. Uh, so that's a great thing as well. And then, uh, after the new year here into 2024, but still before this meeting, we had a Packer game outing during the Bears game and Packers game, which brought them into the playoffs. So I hope the good luck continues this Sunday. Uh, around the shop, um, every year we try to become a little more efficient. Um, keep improving the place little by little, uh, and we never had a workbench. So one thing we were able to do is find, uh, good workbench as well as sturdier, sturdier shelving for all of our gallon jugs and everything else. The plastic ones, weren't lasting too much longer. The middle picture is, uh, an Altel computer unit for diagnosing and, um, repairing some things on buses. Every time that we were, uh, getting DPF codes, because these diesel buses can't warm up enough when they're just driving the figure-eight loop around downtown, uh, caused the bus to go into check engine mode and limp mode for, uh, the DPF issues that a lot of those early diesels have. Every time we were taking it in to get serviced, it was $300. This thing paid for itself at 500 and one and a half buses, uh, that first day that we owned it. So that's been good. Uh, it's hard to source one that, uh, had the DPF regen feature, but we found one. Last picture slash video here. Bus undercarriage wash. Uh, this is, this is a hard thing to source. I've been on the search for something economical as well as practical that could be inside to keep the salt off the buses. Wish we had this a long time ago, but we have it now. Um, hooked right into our hot water soap, uh, pressure washer system. And, uh, now we have it at transit, so, uh, keeping that salt off our buses um, and keeping our shop a lot cleaner as well. Uh, installed that a couple of weeks ago. Around the shop, continued. Nothing too much here, other than just trying to keep our flower beds up. Made it a point this year to, to do that. They did a real good job when, when Kent put the facility together and, and got everything looking nice from the beginning. And we could have used a little more rain this summer, as everyone probably could have, uh, tested to as well, but, um, went to Henderson's and fixed up the shrubs and mulch. On the route, so we were approved, uh, uh, hang bus stop signs at Walmart. Uh, we're there often. That's probably the most traveled place that individuals go on our buses. So we now have two bus stop signs there, if you haven't, uh, noticed that or have. Kind of by the north cart area, that, uh, designated area now finally where people know where the bus is going to be, they know what time. And that's been a big help. And for all the one-off printing that we're going to do for single signs here and there, um, cost-effective option for that was a cricket unit. Uh, outdoor, indoor vinyl and, uh, reflective. So that's, that's been good. Community route updates, like I talked about earlier. We implemented the fare again since 2021 of Labor Day weekend of this year. Ridership did not drop. And we, we've done a good job on the saving expenses side, but, um, everything has been very level for the previous three years that I've been here on the income side. And, uh, if we didn't bring it back after helping the ridership increase, it would only go so far, saving money for a little while longer. So looking at the future, that's where, um, these will really help. We haven't had a increase on the doorstop rates since, I don't know if ever, since the commission was formed around 2010. So if you divide the 33% increase on the doorstop route that happened in 2024 on the new year from $3, 33% divided by 11 or 12 years, comes out to around 2%. Subsidy updates, UW Stout increased their subsidy by 3% in 2023 and the city of Menominee in 2024 increased their subsidy 10%. And that one, uh, was very appreciated. That has been, um, the same subsidy since, uh, about 2011. So that's around a 1% increase or so per year. So that was needed and appreciated, um, this last fall. For looking forward to the future and continuing to build the transit agency. Couple route updates, um, starting with the left side, the stout PM route. On our annual survey from the stout students, they say, why won't the community bus run longer? Why won't the stout bus take us to Walmart? Well, we thought about it and with the volume of riders that we had after 5 o'clock on the stout route, we deleted one of the four loops that went in one hour and matched the 442 after, the 47 after, the 53 and the 56 after with the daytime community route departure times from those locations. So we still do three stout loops from lower campus to upper campus. We added one loop to North Town and this is the previous route, in the bottom middle, and added that just at the back end of every hour from 5 o'clock to 9 o'clock. So it matches the daytime timeframes that the bus is going there. And it's been a pretty seamless transition. The students are using it very extensively and this will be the first full academic year using it. So, um, I'm excited to see what the feedback is here in a couple of months. The one thing we had to watch for is where the bus is going to maintain capacity. And, uh, they easily are. Okay. The community route up until Labor Day weekend, uh, was ending at 4 o'clock and this year it now ends at 5. So there is another loop on the community loop that has not been on there before. Electric bus update. The last update we got was 11:14 at 2023. Normally we get monthly updates from them. The last update that we got, they went through some hurdles of themselves. This was about 90% of the way to the finish line and uh, their supplier canceled all contracts with current battery suppliers. So this is where we are, uh, a year later in my update to you. Phoenix, the, uh, bus manufacturer in Altoona, that is the location that they test these vehicles, um, are in discussions for when they're supposed to schedule it. They won the bid for purchasing Proterra Transit buses. Uh, that's a large, uh, transit bus company that has an identical test track to this testing facility that legally needs to test these buses. So they're going to use it as a pre-test, which will greatly increase their chances of scoring highly in all aspects of the Altoona test. And they are stating that we are still on schedule as previously discussed, which is Q1 of '24 for, uh, delivery of these buses. Before I get to the questions, we're a little indirectly involved in this, but not as much as the neighbors and human services, but, uh, with as the neighbors and human services. But with some of the money that was saved in 2022 and put into the trust fund from Dunn County Transit and Human Services 8521 grant that we had, we were able to give what the neighbors needed to get them to the finish line of their bus that they've been fundraising for, for a long time. So that's a positive thing that happened as well this summer. Other than that, any questions?
Any questions from the supervisors? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Whit, thank you for your report. I've got two things. Number one, I would like to save $20 this year when I go to the watershed conference and I have to pay a parking ticket. And I believe that last year, your buses were running from the rec park to the Red Cedar Watershed Conference. Is that being scheduled again this year? And how are people being notified that that would be available?
Let me circle back with you on that.
Okay, number two. We, we haven't got, we haven't got to the operation of the battery buses yet. And I think I asked you a year ago at a committee meeting about what additional training would the Dunn County employees that are now drivers have in dealing with an emergency situation with batteries versus what they've got now. And before I was told that you've got an in-house guy that teaches them everything they need to know about driving the bus. But I keep hearing we're wrecker companies and police departments or people that respond to accidents that involved battery powered vehicles, that there's some additional steps to be taken. Are we, when it gets to that time? Or, I mean, I'd sure would hope that our Dunn County employees that are operating a battery operated bus would know what happens when that bus may happen to go on its side.
Yes, absolutely. I hope and will make sure, everything that I can do on my end to ask every question that we need when it becomes delivered. I really don't think that they are going to drop it off, give us the keys and call it a day. And if, if they do, these questions need to be answered. So I'll be that person to do that.
Supervisor Pat Brezlin.
Thank you very much, Chairman. A couple of quick questions. Excellent report. Did a very good job going through it. Question one, last year when you were here, you were mentioning that a few of the counties were basically getting out of their commitments with the electric buses, and you were mentioning possibly looking at purchasing a third. What happened with that? And is that being preceded with, or did that get tabled?
That is tabled, but we are penciled in if we want it with BART if they become available. We are first on the list. There was, at the time, a lacrosse organization that were waiving their two because they said they were too small. And there hasn't been really talk since then because these first ones have been delayed so much. But if any updates come, I can let the board know as well.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Second question, and this is maybe not as much for you, but I really need to gain some knowledge here and understanding. The bus schedules are really for the City of Menominee and for stout. The large number of districts within our county, it does not help them in the least bit for the buses. St. Croix County to our west, Eau Claire County to our east, Chippewa County, Barron County, and Polk County, none have transit or buses under the county authority. It's under individual cities such as Hudson or Eau Claire. Why as a county are, do we have bus service? Why are we diving into that realm when it's not really helping a majority of the citizens within our county?
I might be able to speak to that a little bit as I was around at the time. The former
Supervisor Kelly.
Yes. The former process we had for elderly and disabled transit was essentially being phased out in terms of state and federal funding. The only way we were able to maintain an ongoing elderly and disabled transit in the county as a whole was to form a, it's like a semi-world transit system. So foundationally, the bus system was created in order to allow us to continue to be able to serve that population. And we have occasionally tried over the years to run buses out on a route basis to some of the more outlying areas, but people were unwilling to use them. It primarily sits in the City of Menominee and with stout, because you need a certain level of readers, of ridership to maintain the programs. So the stout ridership and the community route allow us to continue the funding we need to serve all of the areas for elderly and disabled transit.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Chairman McCullough. That being said, Eau Claire, St. Croix County, and the others all have disabled and elderly transit that are not part of any type of bus system. So even though that may have been the case in the past, I think that needs to be looked at again, because these separate counties all have that ability to service their residents without having the, all of the things basically with regards to having a full bus system. That should be underneath the individual entities, whether it be stout or Menominee, because it's really not benefiting residents in a lot of our individual districts whatsoever, other than being taxed for. So I appreciate the information, but I think it needs to be looked at.
It, it's an enterprise fund. It pays for itself.
Yeah, there's no, there's no county tax levy that comes to transit. It's paid for from the city subsidy, UW Stout, then ridership, and the state funding. We go out as far as we can right now to outlying 10-mile or so locations to pick up people, to bring them into day programs in town. And as long as it does not interfere with helping three people out in town to one person out there, depending on our schedule, we help out who we can as far out as we can. Previously, this transit agency went to outlying cities. It had a day route that went to Elk Mound in the morning, then Eau Claire, then back to Elk Mound, then Menominee, then did a community route for four or five hours, then did the afternoon to Eau Claire one more time and back. It branched off into a couple of other cities as well for a small period of time. Some of that data is not around anymore. But talking to Ken, the transit manager, from about 2011 to 2014, before this was a transit commission, and then a couple of years of it into being a transit commission, the ridership was just very low for the amount of money that was getting spent to go there. Currently, Dunn County Transit is one of the highest ridership per dollar, lowest, highest ridership per dollar for the, one of the best ratios for transit agencies in the state with what we are doing with UW Stout, the community route, and then the doorstop. But I appreciate the question.
Thank you very much. Excellent job.
Are there any other questions for Austin?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Monica's got a question. Excuse me, Monica?
Yes, hi. So I, I ride the bus fairly frequently, about four or five days a week. You guys have a great service. It's, I look forward to it. It's nice. Last year, I complained about service not being available on the community route after four. Really want to say thank you for adding that additional route to five o'clock. And I thought that the solution that you made combining, or with the stout route, running that up to Walmart once an hour, I thought that was really clever. Appreciate that greatly. If I could have one wish, it would be to increase the frequency greater than one hour. I know that that's a big can of worms, but something to, that I wish the transit commission, the committee, would think about and try to prioritize. I know that there are a lot of trips that I make throughout the week that if, if there were a greater frequency, I'd be using the bus more often. But instead, I'm finding other solutions. I know that I'm not the only one doing that. So anyway, just, I know that's a huge ask, a lot to think about, but why don't you put that out there? Again, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none or seeing none. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
Next order of business is the Fair Board. Deb Gottliebson will give us the, the news.
Good evening. It's great to be back. I was just here, well, not really here, because I wasn't aware of the, that there had been a change and I could speak at the meeting. So I'm glad to be back and I'm glad to have a do-over. So thank you, Chris, for allowing this to happen. I'm, I used the same presentation or the same written report, just made a couple tweaks on it since we were at the end of the year that you received in your packet. But I do have some new information that I can share with you. Whoop, hit that too hard. So first of all, I want to talk about our Fair Board. We have eight people on there. We have the opportunity to add one more person to make it our, our full board. So if you know of anybody that would be interested in serving on the Fair Board, please send them my way. We do not have any paid staff. We're all volunteers. We do, during the week of the fair, contract with somebody, with an individual to do our treasurer, count our money, and collect our money at the gates. And we do work with the facilities department, Public Works or Facilities, and then they, we pay their salary and their benefits while they're at the fair working for us. So our mission statement is that the Dunn County Fair will provide an entertaining and educational event for people of all ages. And this is what we strive to do all the time and keep this in the back of our mind whenever we plan events or plan, plan the fair. So for 2023, our fair theme was fun for the whole herd. And our graphics person, our person that does our advertising, Sam, she created our little logo with the mini mini hoof prints and also created our poster, which is on the next slide. So out entertains with our entertainment and what's happening at the fair. And then we also have another poster that she creates that has our schedule on it. That's a more advanced one. If you get the COFAX Messenger or the Buck, we do advertise in those pieces. We don't print as many posters anymore because we found that a lot of businesses don't like to hang the posters up in their businesses or their offices. They'll gladly take the poster and put it in their break room, but if that doesn't get the public to see the posters. So we're saving money by not putting, not printing a ton of posters, and we're doing other social media and online advertising. So of course, part of our, the things that we do, our kids, we work with the kids and the different groups in the county. And as I mentioned, our educational, our part of our mission statement is to work, and the first little picture shows our alpaca exhibitor really explaining how to show alpacas and all about alpacas to a couple of young ladies there. And then there's just a couple of other, other people. If you've never been to the fair and watched the cat show, that's an interesting event. That's on Tuesday early before they, before a lot of other stuff comes in, because cats get distracted very easily. And the dog show also that day. And there's just a couple more pictures of kids and animals. The alpaca is an interesting exhibit. This year, she entered her alpacas. We only have one exhibitor that brings alpacas. She has two, and she did agility and social, like a social manners class with the alpacas. So we put up a obstacle course, and they train their alpacas to do the obstacle course. And then we had, you know, there's just a couple pictures of our, you know, our hog show and our beef show. And our map auction, another very successful auction this year. It was our second highest ever. Back to 2021, of course, we broke records, but just like every other fair in the state of Wisconsin coming off of COVID, we all broke records. But we had less animals this year. And if you would have taken that whole piece and if you rounded out, we actually did go over what our, our, our numbers were in 2021 this year. And then for the, the kids and the youth and, and open class that do not have animals, we have many, many things that you can learn and do at the fair. You can do flowers, vegetables, houseplants, photography, cooking. There's a lot of new things that we're adding all the time. There's computers. And I want to, you know, there's baking, there's quilting, barn quilts, and so forth. And of course, your crops. And that second picture up there, we do have a shooting sports program. 4H has that. So that's part of the fair. They can enter their shooting sports information. So that's the targets that are used. And so we put those on display too, to just show off fair events and how they're required. We are required by the state to get our state aid that anything that's held off fair has to be approved by the state. And then we have to make an exhibit at the fair of some type to show that that project was held. And of course, we had a few tractors again this year, and antique tractors that will be expanding next year. Our plans are to open up the 17th and Main Building again and increase the car show and antique tractors. So if you have some, let me know. And the carnival. Carnival is always a big highlight of the fair. A lot of fun things that happen there. A lot of kids liking to ride, like to ride. And unfortunately, with the heat that we had this year, we had to shut down early one day. And, and I, I don't know how hot that was, but I think you could have grilled hamburgers on that slide this year. And yes, that's me showing a calf. We started a beef open class show this year, which was very successful for our first year. We plan on, plan on expanding that next year. And as part of that, we did a super senior showmanship contest, and it was for anybody that had graduated out of 4H or FFA or been a prior exhibitor. They could enter this and you could borrow an animal. Well, they talked me into doing it, but I didn't know anything about showing a beef. And so I said, I'll do a dairy. But I had one problem. The judge looked at me and said he didn't know what to do with me, because here I am with my dairy calf in the beef show. But I had a lot of fun. I haven't been on a halter for a long time. So it was fun. And we have our pedal pull. We had a great number of contestants that did the pedal pull this year. That little girl there, that's my great niece, but she actually placed pretty high up. And Larry helps with that part. So he can probably tell you where she placed exactly. But we also brought a sow that had ferrode in, and we had her, since we didn't have a petting zoo this year, we, they're getting few and far to find. And so we had a sow that had ferrode, and she came in. She, we were pretty worried about her. We had the wheelbarrows ready because the water was six inches from her pen, that we were going to have to load those piglets up and, and evacuate the hog barn. But we did it. We, we were okay. And then there's the beef show. And then the middle picture on the bottom, you probably read that Randy Grossbier had passed away the week of the fair. And of course, he owns CalPackers or did. And that was, he was a good supporter of the fair. We took a lot of meat animals to CalPackers. And so Joel Carr actually came down and he built a bench, got one of our benches, built a bench, and we put it in memory of Randy. And we set that at the auction. It was sitting in the front row and nobody sat in it. It was just kind of a memorial to, to Randy. So and the final picture there is the Sunday morning water fight. Can't have a fair without a Sunday morning water fight. And weather. This was our nemesis this year. I hope it was the one in 100th, but I, as I was thinking about that. I hope it was the one in 100th, but I, as I was thinking about that, I survived the 1980 storm or storm at the fair. So I guess it wasn't quite one in 100, but I hope it never comes back again. And this is our grandstand events. It was mud. We had to cancel everything but the demo derby. And the demo derby was on Sunday afternoon, and by that time it had dried out a little bit. But you have to remember that demos like mud. So it was the only thing that worked out pretty good for them. So unfortunately, but we had kids that were doing belly sliding in that water pond there down by the hog barn. And, you know, you may do when you get you get rain, you try to figure it out. And we had a few people hold down the the tent over the free stage, but it went anyway. So it was an interesting, interesting time. And we also had the grain bin as part of our education piece, brought in their portable slaughter facility. They can slaughter on your farm right now. If you want them to come there, they'll do it right on your farm. And so they came in and did some demonstrations. They did not slaughter an animal at the fair, but they showed how it's done and showed their equipment and and put on demonstrations for a couple of things. So more of our educational part. And then we had a visit from the fairest, Wisconsin fairest of the fair. She came on the day that we were shutting down early, which it was extremely hot that day. So we I didn't get to spend a lot of time with her, but I believe Larry spent time with her. So very, very. Yeah. She's a a great advocate for the fair association and for all county fairs in Wisconsin. And I don't know if you knew, but we do have a medallion hunt and we are there early in the morning and we hide a medallion someplace and then we put clues once every hour and the kids start looking for the medallion and and we try to stump them, but we haven't been too successful lately. So we've got to find better hiding places or give harder clues. But we read four clues and then if they don't find it with those four clues, then their names all get put in a bucket and we draw. So just a piece of it. I don't think I've ever talked about the medallion contest before. Anyway, so the Dunn County Fair, we do add revenue to the county in sales tax and bringing other and bringing a lot of visitors into the county. We also work with different nonprofit groups. And there are a few of them that we work with are listed there. We have food stands that are operated by nonprofits along with regular food trucks. And we showcase local youth and adults, and we provide entertainment and education. So I want to thank the Public Works and Facilities employees. They're a great help. It was a struggle this year with everything that was happening and our sponsors, volunteers and exhibitors and everyone else who played a part in the fair. We can do what we do without the support of our sponsors and our volunteers. And our 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 we strive to make everybody happy like that little young person there. We're working on 2024. We will be releasing our theme soon, building around that. We'll do it as a contest like we did last year. So I can't tell you, we selected it already in October, but we don't roll it out till January. We're working closely right now with Menominee Youth Hockey to come up with a plan to create a multipurpose pavilion out in the food court area that we will be able to use for a free stage. And we have our entertainment booked. We're working on 2025 as we work on 2024. And probably the most asked question I ever get is, when are you start working on the fair? Or I suppose you're getting busy working on it. And I get that question in June and I'm like, yeah, we're working on 2025 or 2026 in June of this year. So we're always ahead and a lot of that stuff we have to get get done ahead of time. But in a final. Mark your calendars. It'll be here before you know it. So I hope you all can come. And if you would like to volunteer or have any ideas or anything, please let me know or Ron or Larry, as I sit with you guys in this room monthly. So thank you very much. If you have any questions.
Is there any questions? Supervisor, Willsey.
Hey.
Hi. Sorry, Deb, I'm gonna I'm gonna aid you a little bit here, but Deb Deb used to be my 4H leader back in the day. And and as an exhibitor, it's so it was such a good deal for me. So I was part of the meat animal project and all the money I raised from that I paid for college. So years later, it's it's paid off for me being a 4H exhibitor. So just wanted to say how important I think it is.
Oh, great. Thank you. And a lot of families that helps with their education, the kids. So.
Supervisor, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Deb, I just want to say thank you for all your work, the great report you just gave and what what the fair brings to our community. Living in a district very close to the fairgrounds and seeing all the activities and hearing it is awesome. You know, it's it's great to see our facilities in in full use like that, even even if it's for a short time, it's very meaningful to our community. So thank you for all your efforts.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Supervisor Vogel.
Thanks, Deb. And hopefully you all read her report and she probably doesn't want to toot her own horn, but she was inducted to the Wisconsin Association of Fairs Hall of Fame. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. It was quite an honor.
Thank you, Supervisor Vogel. I think that deserves a round of applause. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, thank you, Deb, for a very good report. Thank you and for your hard work.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Next order of business is number 10, consideration of reports, resolutions and ordinances to the county board from the executive committee. 10A, a resolution amending county supervisor districts 24 and 23. I would entertain a motion to that effect. Supervisor Hedlund, second. Supervisor Lenal, speaking to the to the item, Andrew, our clerk.
Sure. This is a you saw two of these redistricting annexations from the city of Menominee last year. This is pretty standard. Essentially, we have to pass this resolution modifying the district maps for the county supervisors. If we do not do this, the new annex parts become their own little voting location, even though nobody lives there, and I have to produce ballots for no one. So please don't let me do that. And bypassing this resolution, that would just clear all this information up. After this gets passed, just as a procedural thing, the land information officer, Rachel Wells, will then update all the maps online. And so that all the maps would be up to date as possible before the elections. So any questions?
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next order of business is consideration of reports, resolutions, ordinances coming to the county board from the standing committees. 11A, committee and administration, a resolution approving out of class pay for ERP. I would entertain a motion. Supervisor Bauer moves. Supervisor Hedlund, seconds, speaking to the resolution. Supervisor Hedlund.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What is going on is, of course, we're in the middle of a search for a possible replacement of our county's electronic reporting system or computer system and the software program that is needed that we depend on to do all the work that computers do for us in terms of payroll and records and so forth. Right now, we have a system called SAP. That almost became a swear word in this room at one time for the things that it wasn't or was to us that we didn't think it should have been. They are going to be changing and updating their systems, which means that in the future, they have notified us that we will have to either upgrade with them or move on to another source of software. And so we formed a committee to do that, and we have some staff here in the county who have agreed to head that group of gathering information from all the employees so that next time around, we have a good fit. And so we're recommending that we pay them in accordance with the fact that they are going to be actually running this group and and managing what's going on. And so if you look in your backlog information, it's going to cost us slightly under $20,000 in additional wages for the year. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the supervisors? Seeing none and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. Next order of business is 11A2, ordinance amendment, chapter five, assistant county manager, first reading. And this is the first reading, so we don't need any action on it. We need a motion in a second.
Yes. Bring it to the floor.
Okay, I need a motion to that effect and a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisors on, seconds, speaking to the motion.
If anyone wishes to speak, they may, but it's the first meeting.
Thank you for leading me by the hand. You heard what he had to say. If you want any speaking on it, if not, it'll be be addressed at our next meeting. Next order of business is the resolution amending employee handbook vacation. I would entertain a motion to adopt that. Supervisor Hedlund moves. Supervisor Lenal seconds it. Speaking to the motion, Supervisor Hedlund.
Chair, I don't know if you remember, but as in the backlog information, we passed the change, temporary change back in in the during term operating under the COVID regulations to allow employees to receive an extension of their vacation time or payout because some of them were not granted the ability to use their vacation due to staff shortages or in fact, they worked for emergency services in somewhere or another and we're not we were not granting any vacations. And that's kind of came up again because of staff shortages that continue. We have situations where people just are not granted enough time off to use up their vacation by the due date. And if they don't, they lose it. And of course, we don't want them to lose something that they worked to earn. And so this would change the handbook to say that they could receive payout for that time instead of time off.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The next order of business is 11A4, which is struck from the agenda because it's not ready. Following that, 11B Legislative Committee, 2024 Dunn County Legislative Agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve that. Supervisor Calabrese moves. Supervisor Morehouse, seconds, speaking to the motion. Being that I'm sitting here in the chair, I'd appreciate if somebody else could speak to it. Deathly silence. County manager, Corporal.
The chickens are out.
Chris, do you have a call?
Excuse me.
Wake up.
Is that you, Kelly?
Yes, it was. I I I had myself not on mute and the rooster below my balcony here decided to serenade me.
All right. So for those of you who have been a part of the board, you'll recognize that for the last several years, the board has worked through a process through the standing committees, departments and standing committees to put forth forth an annual legislative agenda, identified items from the standing committees and departments, which are believed to be important ones to advocate for with our legislators. We will invite the legislators to our February county board meeting. You see at the bottom of the agenda, the schedule for that, an opportunity for some time to kind of have a meet and greet with them ahead of time, starting at 5:30. We will have a light, like dinner-ish type of thing, just some some heavy hors d'oeuvres, maybe is a better word, for that meeting. 6:00 PM, a presentation of the proposed agenda that you'll vote on this evening and then a regular county board meeting at 7:00. So many of the items that remain on the legislative agenda for 2024, it is a non-budget year, so there aren't new necessarily a lot of new items to be looked at, but many of them are carryforwards from the past year. There are a few additional items. And I think that's kind of the summary of it.
Thank you, Chris. I would just take a minute to give some of the reasoning behind it. We felt as a as a as a committee that the chance to interact with our legislatures on a one-on-one basis prior to the meeting would enhance our relationship with them. And the fact that we added some refreshments, maybe that'll entice them to come. So that's the reasoning behind it. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next order of business is Planning Resource and Development Resolution on Public Participation Plan. I would entertain a motion to approve that. Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Kinnear, second, speaking to the motion. Supervisor Quinn.
Very briefly, so the during this year, the the state requires that that we update our county comprehensive land use plan, which will be the committee will be doing this year and making back to the board for review and approval. That also requires that there be a a defined plan for getting public participation in that whole planning process. And our staff has put together a plan that is uniquely positioned to get that input over the course of the coming year and mostly to get it upfront rather than going to people at the end and saying, what do you think of this? The idea is to sort of have the discussions with the community ahead of time and then incorporate that into the planning process. So this is the approval of that plan.
Any questions from the supervisors? For Supervisor Quinn. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Next order of business is the announcement that supervisor or county manager corporal mentioned, next county board meeting, February 21, 2024, 5:30, meet and greet with the local legislatures legislators, 6 o'clock legislative agenda presentation, 7 o'clock regular county board meeting. Hopefully, we're we've been searching over the years for a way to make more connections, better connections, and this is just more of our efforts to do a better job. But you can't have a one-way conversation. We'd like to encourage all of our legislators to come come here, you know. As best as I can see, that concludes our, excuse me. County clerk, Andrew Mersell.
The new per diem sheets are out on this table. If you want to get into the new habit in the new year of filling out a per diem sheet after each meeting, could be really helpful. Supervisor someone. So the new per diem sheets are out. The other thing is, this is kind of fun for me. It's actually an HR incentive, but I get to play Santa because there are Dunn County branded hats for each and every one of you. So if you want to come get your Dunn County hat in this cold weather, you can come up here and grab a hat. Quite exciting. So those are compliments of HR. Do you want to correct me on that? Do you want to correct me on that?
Why don't you do it like Oprah? Everyone gets a hat.
And you get a hat. And you get a hat. What, Jenna? Oh, they're purchased, yes, thank you for clarifying that. They're purchased through well-being funds that were donated to the county, not out of county funds. Important to note.
Thank you.
In addition, there is on many of your, it's a good look, Supervisors Ons. There is the Red Cedar Watershead Conference coming up. There were postcards on your table. If you're interested in attending that, please come up after this meeting and let me know that. And that would be really great. I'll get you signed up.
Just a point of information, the new IRS rate for mileage is 67 cents this year. So just to let you know that.
Chair, Steve?
Point 67 cents.
Chair, Steve?
Yeah.
May, may be.
Well, yes.
Can I just, I just want to take a moment. So there's always a danger in calling out certain people or doing a shout out to certain people because there's a whole lot of people that work really, really hard to make Dunn County a great place to be. But there's a few people that I just think really warrant recognizing tonight. One of them is Melissa Gillenbach in emergency in the 911 center. So Melissa is a manager and she manages a staff of relatively lesser experienced staff who work 24/7 operations. And if you've ever been in the communications center, it's a sort of dark, not very stimulating spot in the world. Melissa has been working, because of the shortness of staff, has been working a ton of nights. So she does her job during the day and then works a night shift. So I just think that's worth her commitment. She's been a long-term county employee and she's still hard at it, filling in where it's needed. Rachel Bach is one of our HR, our HR manager. Tonight at quarter after 6:00, I said, Rachel, she runs payroll. I said, Rachel, is anybody in danger of not getting paid today or on Friday? And she said, no, I don't think so. We just ran the last test. And I said, good, then go home, because she's been there every night for, till late. And she has a young family and a diehard commitment to, to making sure things work. And then sort of on the same note, Lisa Reed, who's also one of our payroll specialists, worked all day Monday on a project to make sure that our payroll ran correctly because of a new change. This will be our first payroll for the new year with the new rates in it. And there was a glitch and she gave up her day off on Monday. And I just had a message from her tonight that she was doing something that I had asked. So she's still working here a half an hour ago. I just think it's worth noting that you all support the work that all of those people and others do. And it's, it's a really good thing. It makes a difference in people's lives every single day.
Thank you, County Manager. Having completed our business, we are adjourned.